Good evening, this is the Towne and Carver Planning Board meeting, April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen at seven o'clock. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, under new business this evening, we have a sign permit. Teresa Leonard, forty North Main Street. Discussion and possible vote this evening.
They are not here, and I told them, Terry Leonard owns a salon up at, I don't know the name of the plaza, but where Little Red Smokehouse is, and they're moving to Anthony Alonje's facility. They are on vacation, but she really wanted the sign before she opened, so I told her, unless you guys had a problem, I would present it for her.
That's all right.
It's very simple, and it's a very small sign, actually. It's ninety-six inches by twenty inches. This would go above the facility, and then one for the plaque. Actually, a nice looking sign.
It is. And this fits into all our dimensional requirements?
Very easily, yep. She could actually go on bigger.
And where did you say this was going to be attached?
I believe it's in the Anthony Alonje's, in that middle one that's vacant on the first floor. I think maybe where Rooney's was, and there was a hair salon after Rooney's, right? Remember, we did a sign for that.
Yeah, so it'd be attached right to the face of the building.
And all the facilities are in there for a hairdresser.
Yeah. Oh, great. Anybody have?
Only question I had, Mr. Chair, through you to Jack. Any lighting she gonna have on this?
No.
No lighting? That's it, I'm good with it. It's fine.
Any other questions?
Just, is it gonna stipulate no lighting? I mean, I had the same question that Will did, but he's gonna stipulate no lighting.
You know, I did say no, she never asked for it. So, let's think about if she changed her mind, she'd come back, and you just open up the permit. Yeah, so it's not a big deal. She's not here anyway.
So, the large sign's gonna be on the building, and the smaller one, is that on some sort of a display out in front of the market out front? Okay. Any other questions?
No, good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign for Teresa Leonard, as presented to us with the following conditions. There'll be no lighting on the sign, and a building permit, if necessary.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous.
Thank you. My first presentation.
That was very, that was an excellent presentation. You've probably done something like this before.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. All right. Next on the agenda is SLT Construction, MBO Precast, Minor Modification, Three Marion Drive. Discussion and possible vote on the application for minor modification of site plan for outdoor storage, originally approved on October tenth, two thousand and six, and modified August seventh, two thousand and seven. Copy of the proposed modification is available for inspection upon request at the Office of the Planning and Community Development during regular business hours.
Well, we have both of you O'Puchinski's here, wonderful businessmen to kind of tell you what they want to do. Essentially, they are fully permitted for outdoor storage and for...
Landscape products.
Landscape product by you, and they're just moving it, is really, to a different site, is the best way to explain it. So, that's thus, and I brought this to you informally to see if you would consider it as a minor modification, and you said you would.
Basically, it's just the storage of my, I'm Jeff O'Puchinski from MBO Precast, and it's storage of my concrete, manufactured concrete products that are now in front of my building, are starting to migrate over to this side. Well, I'm up in the front part of this area, and my brother's been occupied, but the back side, the back side.
This is Plymouth, and then Marion Drive's over here, and MBO's here.
Yeah, so I, basically, my products will be coming over here. There's an existing buffer which shows everything stays as planned, it's just some minor vegetation that's gonna be bringing up to scrub, just gotta get ready for storage. It's a lease with a purchase that we have with Aggregant Industries. Kind of a good thing to do with the land, it's not sellable because it's polluted, so they've agreed to do that with us, so, pretty basic, actually. It's, far as what I do, it's just storage of concrete products.
You wanna talk about your role in this, do you?
Yep. SLT Construction is basically in the site construction business, and what we're going to do is, in the portion of the site that's closest to Route forty-four, just have stockpile materials that we commonly use in our business. It's getting harder and harder to get crushed stone products in this area at, in an affordable rate, so we have the opportunity to buy stone through Aggregant Industries who we're leasing the property from, and as our trucks return at the end of the day, we're just gonna have them bring stone from, you know, the different quarries that they're passing by in the course of the day, and stockpile materials here, and then the trucks can be loaded the next morning, you know, smaller quantities, going out in smaller loads to, you know, different customers, and move the product that way. Just, we see it as an opportunity, and like my brother Jeff said, it's a piece of property that's sitting there vacant right now. It's a haven for dirt bikes on the weekends. We're gonna go in, clean it up, we have a option to purchase it, once the site is deemed cleaned up by the EPA and DEP. Right now, it's not saleable, we couldn't buy it if we wanted to, 'cause no one would finance it, because of the pollution issues with it. It could be five years before it's cleaned up, it could be ten years, but we've reserved the right to purchase it, once it is cleaned, so, you see what we've done with Marion Drive, how that looks. You know, we envision, envision moving our whole operation, you know, east onto that property eventually, and it gives us a nice, nice centralized location for our business, and allows us expansion, you know, more jobs for the town, et cetera, et cetera.
Does anybody have any questions?
I think it's a good deal.
So, now the material that, the material that they're gonna put in there is basically crushed stone?
Yeah, it's crushed stone, dense grade material. It has to be a clean product, that's our, it's in our lease with Aggregant Industries. It can't be anything that's not a processed material, because they have monitoring wells throughout the site, and we're prohibited from bringing in anything that could endanger the monitoring of those wells, 'cause their goal is to get the product, the property cleaned up, and if we were to bring in contaminated soil or something of that, we'd be in deep trouble with them.
And they have access, that's one of the stipulations that, you know, they're obviously gonna continue monitoring their wells, and that's...
Is all gonna be...
And it's all right, then, the materials that you are bringing in, that's not gonna cause any further problems?
No, no, that's, it's, it's product that we're buying from Aggregant Industries, so...
Which I use as well, too. They'll be bringing stuff to our operation as well.
Where are they located now?
Rentham.
They have quarries, you know, they have quarry in Sawagus, they have quarry in Rentham, they have another quarry in Taunton, so they're, I mean, they're a nationwide company, a worldwide company, actually.
Told ya.
So, they won't, they won't let you buy it, because it's polluted right now, but yet they'll lease it to you with approval of the board, allowing you to put the materials on it?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, there isn't anything that causes us to not be able to agree to that, right?
Nothing that I know of. I mean, you're just leasing the land, and just to store materials on it, so...
Correct.
I mean, you're not building any permanent structures on anything.
No, no, no structures, not allowed. It's a pretty specific lease of what they allow us to do there. We can't repair vehicles there, we can't store oils, fluids of any type. We can basically park trucks there, and any, and any concrete products, and native crushed stone products, things of that nature.
Did you have, did you have a question, Rosemary?
Just, stone is gonna be brought in?
Crushed stone, sand, it's a dense grade material. Basically, it has to be a processed material. We can't bring any, any raw materials and let the product sit there. It's pretty much the materials that we will buy from Aggregant Industries, out of a quarry, so, there's no chance of any pollution.
My concern would be the same thing, the pollution.
Mr. Chair, if I could, through you to the applicants, first of all, you guys have done a wonderful job over at Marion Drive. You guys have been a great partner for this community, so I just wanted you to know that, not only with your neighbors, but also with the North Carver Way District, it was greatly appreciated. Haven't had the chance to face to face and tell you guys that, so I appreciate that. The other thing is that, on your stockpiles of material, are you gonna do the same type of containment with the block, your blocking area, are they, are they gonna allow that for you?
Just open piles.
Just open piles?
Yeah.
Do you have height restrictions you need to worry about?
No.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Do they need to go to conservation, because of the waters?
Are you within a hundred feet of the wetland, though?
No.
I do have a question, over there, you guys are talking.
No, I think I'm good with it. I think it's a great reuse of the property.
I think so, yeah.
What these, both MBO and SLT has brought to the community up there, and also with jobs, and what they've done with Marion Drive, I think you're a great asset to tackle on this project, and hopefully be able to purchase the project and expand your business. I think it's great for the community, and I commend you guys for a leap of faith on a contaminated site, that's pretty good.
We left off last fall with our busy season, I think we were about a hundred employees between the two companies.
That's good news. That's really good news.
You're going to Cumberland Farms in the morning, and, you know, there's guys swarming down there for coffee break, and things like that, so it adds up.
We got about a hundred, maybe a little more even, yeah.
I just wouldn't want to see this not cause you to be able to purchase the property, you know, that's all. So, they...
I've been working with Aggregant for probably three years, about discussing this whole thing, and it's finally come to fruition, so it's been ongoing for a while. We are one of the best fits for it, and they realize it.
And the problem is, they're a nationwide company, it's hard to get to the right person to get an answer. We were dealing with a fellow up in New Hampshire, that used to drive down from New Hampshire, and walk the property with us, and we could never get a straight answer out of him, so...
It worked out. It finally worked out. Well, I'm glad to see you're at this stage of the game, 'cause I think it works great for both, both of you guys' companies, so I think it's a good asset to the community.
Jack, did you have a, did you have a question?
I did. Peter, how can I in the decision define what you're allowed to put in there? I got native crushed stone products, processed materials.
Yep.
What else?
I would say process sand and gravel material products.
Is that enough?
Yeah.
You don't have by any chance, sorry, Jack, a list of products that you...
I can shoot Jack a quick email and just list out the products.
And I could put that in the...
That's perfect.
Pretty much have done that, but can make a little more specific, if you want.
And I think, I forget who talked about the height. I am, I think we're gonna need to limit your height...
Yep.
...because of the fire department. So, I'd like to reserve the right upon your approval to limit the height pursuant to the deputy fire chief's specifications.
That'd be perfect.
That's all I have.
All right, we have...
One other thing, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I think the, what's not being said here is, when MBO moves their product off, it's gonna make a lot available, and hopefully, we can find someone that, and I know you're...
I'm discussing it with somebody right now, but nothing is, nothing is written down.
That's the beauty in all this. We keep them in business, they can expand, they're using a lot that's not tax productive right now, and we're gonna have a lot, hopefully, that's...
For another business to come in.
Yeah, that's, that was my plan, is to probably sell that off.
I think, I think at their, your initial concept, when you guys moved from Plymouth over here, and brought your business to Carver and Marion Drive, that was the initial concept of the property, dividing up to have the potential for not only you two, but also for the two front lots. So, with the sale of the one lot, and then, I look at it on my end, as a taxpayer in the town, them expanding to their next door end, and freeing up that spot out front is great. Nothing but positives.
No, we knew, we kinda had this deal in our back pocket, so it did allow us to sell our front lot to Crop Production Services.
Think that's great.
It's all, you know, kinda all in the same boat.
Yep. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minor modification for SLT and MBO Precast on Three Marion Drive, with the conditions specified as they'll provide us with a material specification to be added to the modification, also the condition of a height restriction set by the deputy fire chief or the fire chief on a public safety issue. That's all I have.
So, you have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
And that's our clipboard on the table there? Yeah. I didn't know if somebody left it. All right, under old business, and it's after seven fifteen, we have a public hearing. Market Square LLC, one twenty-four, one twenty-eight, Main Street, special permit, apartments above commercial and minor modification.
You'll see in your packet that they're asking for another thirty-day continuation. I had a discussion with the owner yesterday, and essentially, he's still trying to wrap himself around the issue that he has, three out of the four septic systems have failed as far as the board of health is concerned, and he does want to move forward with the project. He has contacted a septic installer, an engineer, he just has to move forward. I did tell him that whenever we set the continuation, that regardless of what, where he's at, he can either come in with plans, withdraw, or he'll have to come here and talk to you. That's your policy, because you need to know face to face, and the public needs to know why we're extending this all the time. I think it's great, we all think it's a great idea, it's just, you know, so, I'm gonna recommend that you continue it till, he's gonna ask me, May twentieth.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for Marketplace Square LLC to May twentieth at seven fifteen?
Thirty.
Seven thirty.
Have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on old business, we have a discussion and possible endorsement. Clark Griffith, Form A, Lakeview Street.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to excuse myself, as one of the companies I own has done work with Mr. Griffith. Thank you.
All right. And this is a colored, color-coded plan.
Frank, could you see that all right?
Yep.
This is a Form A off of Lakeview Street, it's a little complicated, Brian did walk me through it, but if I had to remember it all, I was challenged. Being the challenged person I am, I've asked him to color code it to make it easier for you and the public to understand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, hopefully that does make it easier. Thank you, Brian Grady with GAF Engineering, here for Mr. Griffith, who is here with us tonight.
Hi, Brian.
Did I introduce myself?
Yes, you did. Very good, thank you.
Brian, you're gonna need the mic. Okay, let me see if I can just walk you through this quickly. This large piece on the easterly side of the property, we have that labeled as a parcel. That's currently all within conservation restriction, currently, so what we've done is just taken the conservation restricted land and separated out, so this will never be built on, it's under conservation restrictions, probably mostly wetlands, so that's what this large piece totaling just about ten acres is. Up here on the northeast easterly side, we are proposing a buildable lot. There's no structures on this property, there's no wetlands on this property, there is a paved driveway which acts, runs through the property. This centerpiece, the large centerpiece outlined in blue, that contains the bulk of the cranberry bogs, Indian brook runs through the center of the bog, and there's also an agricultural building located on this centerpiece, the center lot. We're calling that Lot twenty-six dash I. This lot here outlined in green, which we're calling twenty-six dash F, that has a small existing office building on it, and there is a structure on that building. It's, we, we meet for these lots that I've talked about, they all have frontage, except for the parcel, which is the conservation land. They all have the necessary frontage and necessary upland area. As I said, this building has a structure on it, the office. The corner piece on Lakeview and Route fifty-eight, that's, has a small cranberry bog section on it, but there's a considerable amount of upland area, approximately three and a half acres of upland area. So, that would be considered a separate buildable lot in and of itself. And I think finally, on the bottom here, is another separate lot, just over two point three acres, no wetlands on it, so it has the area and the frontage for a buildable lot. So, really, there's maybe potential for one, two, three building lots that don't currently have structures on them already. This one has a cranberry bog on it, doubtful if there would be a home on it, but I guess it's possible. And then the other ones are primarily agricultural, with the office and the small reservoir, and then, of course, the large centerpiece, which is primarily cranberry bog, and it has the Indian brook running to the center of it.
Excuse me.
So, that's a quick run-through, and if I could just respond to any questions.
I do have a question. You have the parcel in the middle, says Matt Batelaw, twenty-six dash B.
Sorry, this is an existing parcel.
Okay, so that...
It's just being surrounded by lots that are being created, but this currently exists, so there's no change to that.
So, that was an existing parcel, and then all the surrounding lots all around it were one big parcel all around that particular piece of property?
Yeah, this exists, twenty-six B, twenty-seven exists, twenty-six A exists, and the remainder is being modified. All that's outlined is, I think, Lot twenty-six. Twenty-six is being subdivided into these lots, but this center one exists, it's weird, it's in the middle of nowhere.
It's like a, it's like a non-conforming lot, because it has no frontage on the streets.
Right, but there is an existing dwelling there, so it pre-exists, I think it was probably built around nineteen twenty or so, something like that.
Okay, so, but that lot existed, so...
Yeah, no changes are happening to those lot lines, right? Thank you for pointing that out.
So, I see no, as long as these lots all meet the proper frontage requirements and the proper, yeah, square foot or acres of each parcel, I don't see any particular problem with this. It's well-montented, and it looks fine to me. Anybody else have any questions?
No, as long as it meets the frontage and acreage, it's fine.
Could you explain on the existing parcel on Lakeview, on the top there, what's on there, on those two parcels?
Correct.
These parcels have addresses of eleven and fifteen, so there are single-family residences on both of those parcels.
Just so you know.
Yes.
You can see how complicated it is, but it makes sense, once he walks as well.
Right. No, as long as it meets the zoning requirements, that's fine. It's just a lot in the middle that, but that, that had already been created, and so, that's not what we're looking at tonight. So, I guess...
We're focusing on the lot, the yellow highlighted lots?
Well, it...
For buildable?
Yeah, these would be available, for buildable lots, right.
The orange on the top?
Possibly.
Right, this has a cranberry bog on it, so...
And some uplands as well.
But it has enough upland where it could support a single-family home, yeah.
I'll remind Kevin that with a Form A, it's considered approval not required, and if it meets the lot size, and it meets the frontage, it has no discretion.
Okay.
And that's state law. And if you chose not to approve it, the town clerk after twenty days will approve it.
Are there any other questions? Kevin, do you have any more questions?
No.
So, I guess we're just looking for a motion to approve, second?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Endorse.
Endorse.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The Mylar is here, you wanna take it with you, Brian?
Brian, we'll take it with us.
If I can get you four to sign, the Mylar will do the other copies later, for Brian to take it.
Okay.
Let's light up. Switch the handle.
Nice to see you, Clark.
Good to see you, Clark. Thank you.
What comment I might make on that plan? I didn't think it would be clear.
Okay.
Lot here is on Route fifty-eight, adjacent to the fire station. I'm holding that for the fire department, should they ever need it. Place to go, Villar, Big Lots, Monique, I have no plans to develop that. I'm just hanging on, I told the fire chief to get that one.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Not surprised.
You've been, you've been very good to the Towne and Carver, thank you very much.
Not surprised one bit.
Thank you, Clark.
All right, under other business tonight, we have SERPED Planning Board Appointment, Discussion and Possible Vote.
Planning Board gets to nominate and elect a representative to SERPED. Bruce is your appointee right now.
I'd like to appoint Bruce.
Bruce, do you want it? Gee, I've been doing it for a while. Yeah, I'll continue. I'll continue doing it.
Is that in a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bruce, Bruce to SERPED.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, you're doing an outstanding job.
Jack, Jack is part of this too, so he comes to the meetings with me.
Selectmen's appointee. We go together most of the time.
Thank you, Jack. You and Bruce are doing an outstanding job.
All right, next, we have Planning Board Notes. Anybody have anything to say this evening?
Well, I'd like to just say one thing. Everybody knows the, April twenty-sixth is the day to come out and vote and exercise your rights. Everybody's vote does count. Trust me, I know. So, everybody just get out there, hopefully we have a nice day for all the candidates. That's it.
Thank you. I would just like to say, I think every few weeks, or once a month, or maybe every once in a while, I do mention that we have the monies available to help anybody, and they're still available through the local housing partnership to help people if they having problems with paying their mortgages, and we have helped several families in the town, and we are continuing that, and I know that the economy's getting better for a lot of people, but a lot of people still may be having problems, so if you are having any problems, please call Jack and see if you qualify for mortgage assistance. All right, uh, next, uh, we have planning board notes, anybody have anything to say this evening?
Well, I'd like to just say one thing, um, everybody knows the, um, April twenty-sixth is day to come out and vote and exercise your rights. Um, everybody's vote does count, trust me, I know, so, uh, everybody just get out there, hopefully we all have a nice day for all the candidates, that's it.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to say, I think every few weeks or once a month or maybe every once in a while, I do mention that we have the, uh, monies available to help anybody. And they're still available, uh, through the local housing partnership to, uh, help people, uh, if they have any problems with, uh, paying their mortgages. And, uh, we have helped, uh, uh, several families in the town and, uh, we are continuing that. And, uh, and I know that the economy's getting better for, uh, a lot of people, but a lot of people still may be having problems, so if you are having any problems, uh. Please call Jack and see if you qualify for a mortgage assistance, uh, uh, program.
Good job.
Anybody else? All right, we'll go on to planners' notes.
I'll be very brief, um, the Antero Solar Project, which is here on, um, Route, off of Route fifty-eight, um, but owned by Mike Paddock. Seems to be alive still, that the selectmen have voted to give him an extension to get, to, to get his final financing and approval from NSTAR. They've given him six months, um, effective whenever, um, he has till May twelfth to come up with an extension document that they'll sign, so he has six months from May twelfth. Um, so we may be seeing that built, that's already permitted, he has a building permit, it's just he needs, uh, some financing and some things he has to work out with NSTAR. I also today had a site visit with Mass DOT at the intersection of Spring Street and Route forty-four to talk about a project that BDC is working on. About disposing of excess property, Mass DOT has there, has a very positive meeting in the rain. Uh, but, uh, it looks like that partnership is continuing and is getting stronger all the time. Um, we're, through BDC, we also just received yesterday a grant from SERPED, actually, the district local technical assistance. To help in putting together some proposed zoning from there, we also got another grant from DACD to hire Atlantic Properties to do a real estate analysis. So, it's coming together, it's taken a while, it's coming together, the BDC has listened to what the residents were concerned about and are trying to address it, so. And then the last thing is, um, yes, uh, today's Tuesday, uh, yesterday morning, I met with the, um, what's called the Governance Committee. And it's a committee set up by the selectmen who are looking about how we govern the town and about how departments operate. And about any opportunities to, um, reorganize, um, and to, um, re, reassign priorities, if you will. And I met with the land use section, which is, um, order health, the building department, the conservation commission, us, and the ZBA. And, um, we didn't finish the meeting, we're gonna finish it on Thursday morning, and then they're gonna go and deliberate and do whatever they do. And I don't know if they're coming up with recommendations or not, um, but I just thought you should know that they're, you know, the town budget is affecting everything, everything. Including this department and all, and every department, I assume, so, um, I don't know what's gonna come out of it, you know, but that's, that's in the works, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Jack, uh, next is the approval of the minutes of April first, two thousand and fourteen.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approved as written for discussion.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second, those in favor?
I got a discussion, clarification.
Oh, sure.
Uh, just an amendment, um, under the Borrego Solar Systems, um, probably in the second paragraph halfway down. I'll just show, um, Kathy, um, where it says, uh, Mr. O'Callaghan, if he, it should have been as the owner of William Sinclair Electric Company Incorporated in Plymouth. Just for proper clarification.
William Sinclair?
William Sinclair Electric Company Incorporated. And then also, um, on the second page, under receipt of plans from Mr. Griffith, Form A, as, as the, as the owner of a company. That has done work for Mr. Griffith, would I excuse myself, that's the only thing I had, thank you.
All right, uh, we have a motion and we have a second, uh, those in favor for approval?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you.
All right, correspondence. Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.